The February 3rd meeting to order, we'll start with our pledge of allegiance and our invocation by Councilwoman Glenda Wade.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear heavenly Father, we say thank you. We thank you for the beauty of today. We thank you for the fellowship. We thank you, Lord. And now as we conduct the business of the city, we pray that we would give every effort to do those things which are right, those things which will be pleasing in your sight. For it's in the matchless name of you, Jesus, the anointed Christ, we do pray. Amen.
Ben, Kim, can we have a roll call?
Yes, sir. Misty Kavanaugh.
Here.
Marvin Hightower.
Present.
Adam Townsend.
Here.
Larry Noff singer.
Here.
Frank Stevenson.
Here.
And Glenda Wade.
Here.
Mayor, we do have a quorum.
All right, our first order of business is the minutes of January 21, 2025.
The January 21, 2025 meeting was held in the City Council chambers and was called to order by Mayor Kevin Cotton. The mayor and all City Council members were present for the meeting. We had approval of the minutes of January 7th, 2025. We had approval of bills and payroll. We had a fire department, police department, and zoning and permit office report. We had two first reading of ordinances, an ordinance amending chapter 31.45 of the City of Madisonville Code of Ordinances relating to established committees, and an ordinance amending chapter 158.03 and 158.22 of chapter 158 Sign Regulations of the City of Madisonville Code of Ordinances. We also had a resolution to declare tract two of a deed book 484, page 32, as surplus property. And we had an approval of a resolution for exchange of property. We had an approval of a resolution to approve the amendment of the adoption of the 2025 updates for the Personnel Policy and Employee Handbook. We had a approval of a resolution to declare the property at 432 East Noel Street as surplus property, and we had an adjournment.
Any corrections to the minutes? If not, do we have a motion to approve?
No move.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and second. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Hearing the motion passes. Next, we'll move on to bills and payroll.
We have the total general fund of 212,22131, total sanitation of 84,85448, total maintenance of 7,28117, total electric utility of 70,94635, total water and filter of 59,66590, total wastewater collection and treatment of 130,18052. We have a estimated biweekly payroll of governmental of 52,988, police of 166,911, fire of 152,590, transportation of 31,649, cemetery of 5,0058, park 18,329, sanitation of 54,824, maintenance garage of 8,00596, light fund of 93,419, wastewater treatment of 20,746, wastewater collection of 33,526, water and filter 64,661, for an estimated biweekly payroll of 703,829.
Do we have a motion to approve the bills and payroll?
No move.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and second. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing the motion passes. Next, we have a few of announcements. Ms. Glenda Wade?
You may, Mayor. I just wish to highlight, this is Black History Month, and this is a pride and the achievements and the accomplishments that we as a people have made. And I wanted to highlight that, to encourage you, if your students are going out and they're mentoring, to let them know. The schools, Madisonville Community College, churches, there are activities that are going on, and I would encourage you to go and see and learn and share and care. And so with that being said, I thank the mayor for allowing me the opportunity just to highlight, because I am an Afro-American, and it's about our people, and it gives us a chance to come to the table. It gives us a chance to share on what we have made, accomplished, and done. And so I just want to highlight that, to say happy Black History Month. It's this entire month of February, so we've got time to go, to learn, to share, to care. And on January the 20th, when we were all for Martin Luther King's birthday, that was a martyr. He is held up, he is regarded, as the epitome of the nonviolence march. It didn't matter what names he was called, it didn't matter how many dogs were sicced on him, it didn't matter how many times the hose pipes were run. He stood for justice and he led the people through nonviolence. And I thank you, Mayor, for allowing me the opportunity to share that.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. We also have a joint proclamation for American Heart Month. And it is all of February. February is American Heart Month, a time when all people, especially women, are encouraged to focus on their cardiovascular health. The City of Madisonville and Hopkins County enthusiastically join the national initiative to support our residents and their efforts to achieve better heart health. And whereas engaging in regular physical activity, maintaining a healthy diet and weight, managing stress, avoiding smoking and vaping, and getting quality sleep each night, all reduce the risk of heart disease and help people live longer, healthier lives. While it is essential to see a healthcare provider if you have symptoms or risk factors related to heart disease, research shows that taking a little time each day to promote a healthy lifestyle can improve your long-term heart health. And whereas the City of Madisonville and Hopkins County also honors those we have lost to heart disease and raise awareness of the actions that we can all take to prevent it. Now therefore, be it resolved that we, Kevin Cotton, Mayor of the City of Madisonville, Kentucky, and Jack Whitfield, Judge Executive of Hopkins County, hereby proclaim the month of February is American Heart Month in the City of Madisonville and Hopkins County, and urge all citizens to acknowledge the importance of the ongoing fight against cardiovascular disease. We do have a few representatives tonight, if you all don't mind to come forward. All right, with that being said, we do have one other thing. We had an amazing tournament this weekend at the Kentucky Sports Factory. I know Councilmember Adam Townsend was out there as well and heard several folks from several other states. Adam, you had a few things that you just wanted to say about the Kentucky Sports Factory.
Yeah, I mean, just like many of y'all in here, I was one of the thousands of people that went to the Kentucky Sports Factory this week. And I'll just say, I met people from multiple different states, from Indiana, from Illinois, from Tennessee, and it was, and heard so many other things from different people who were visiting our local restaurants and other establishments, and how much they just talked positively about Madisonville and the facility. I know, we all know that there are rooms for growth out there, but to hear those conversations already happening is really positive. And so many people that were looking forward to coming back to Madisonville after the time that they'd had. So it was a beautiful weekend for Madisonville and Hopkins County.
And we're going to hear more about that at our next City Council meeting. We're going to have the Kentucky Sports Factory managers here to give us an update on what that looked like, what that economic impact was projected to be. And you're absolutely right. That is one, that is the largest scheduled tournament that we will have at the Kentucky Sports Factory this year. They have already asked to come back next year. So hopefully by next year, we'll be able to have some of those challenges as we were learning. We learned by fire, literally this week, or this weekend, and we're excited that it went off literally without a hitch. They did a great job out there, and you're going to hear a lot more about that when they give that update. So thank you very much for that. All right, now we're going to move into our audit report. We have Ms. Teresa Jones, who does our audit. You're going to hear some amazing things from her today, and some of you have already heard those things, but a big shout out goes to our finance team and our audit team for making sure that all the things are in order for when Ms. Teresa comes in. You'll hear her speak a little bit about that. A big shout out goes to Rob Saint, our city administrator, who manages our city budget and works with each one of our city department heads to make sure that we're working within the guidelines. And then, of course, you all as a city council for approving that budget as we move forward. And I can't wait to hear what Ms. Teresa Jones has to say.
Appreciate you allowing my firm the opportunity to serve as your auditor again this year. I've met with some of you Friday and some of you again today, and some of you will be your third time to hear this go around, so I'm sorry. But anyway, it is some good news. But I'm just going to try to hit some highlights, because we have talked about it a lot. So the city has been able to maintain a solvent financial condition. And so I'm happy to report that the audit went well this year. I appreciate Ms. Simpson's extensive assistance, and Ms. Phillips, and everyone in the various departments that have helped. They did a great job in accumulating the information, and I sincerely appreciate the cooperation from everyone. So our independent auditors' report starts on page one, and it is again, a clean, unmodified opinion. This is as good as it gets. So congratulations. You know, we had no issues, no findings relating to the financial statements. So it is a clean, unmodified opinion. In our opinion, if you want to look on page one, the second paragraph paraphrase says basically, in our opinion, the financial statements referred to above present fairly the financial position of the city. That's paraphrased. But again, that is a clean, unmodified opinion. On the next pages four through 15, I encourage you to read this. This is a management discussion and analysis. On page four through 15, the M D N A, and I may refer to it in a little bit, but Ms. Rhonda prepares this, and it has good analysis, good comparison to prior year. So it's a lot of helpful information to understand the financial statements. So I do encourage you to read this, the M D N A. So that's on pages four through 15. So we'll look to page 16. This is the statement of net position for the city. Basically, this is all of the assets and all of the liabilities of the City of Madisonville. This includes infrastructure, and includes all your long-term debt, your pension liability, everything, all funds. So I'll just, the far right-hand corner, the far right-hand column, the bottom, you see total net position. The total net position of the city, everything included, is 90,958,453. So that is a strong net position. How does this compare to last year? Last year's this net position was about 73,605,000. So that's a 17,352,000 increase in net position over prior year. So that is always a good thing to be increasing the net position. But this is the government as a whole. So what we'll do is we'll turn to page 18, and we'll look at the general fund. On page 18 are the governmental funds, and the general fund is the one that we'll look at. That's one that most, that a lot of the activity that you're familiar with goes through. So in the general fund, you see cash, 7,779,000. Because you can't tell by looking at this, but how does this compare to last year? This is up 1,189,000, increase in cash from prior year. See the total assets under general fund, total assets, 12,686,000. Again, this is an increase of over a million dollars from prior year. So we always like to see total assets increase. Let's look at liabilities. You see total liabilities, 2,327,000 for the general fund. How does this compare to last year? It is down 313,000 from last year. So both good indications. Assets increase and liabilities decrease. So that is a good trend, the right direction to be going. And you'll see total fund balance under the general fund. The total fund balance is 10,274,678. And so that is a good fund balance. But what's even better, if you look right above that 10 million, you see unassigned fund balance. Unassigned fund balance is 9,473,000. So that is fund balance that's available for the city to use to pay its bills and to do what the city needs to do. How does this compare to last year? The unassigned fund balance is 1,311,000 more than prior year. So that is a good increase in unassigned fund balance. Also, we've talked about in prior years, it's a good rule of thumb to have at least three months' worth of expenditures in your unassigned fund balance. So for '22, you had 2.27 months of expenditures in unassigned fund balance. For '23, that number was 2.93. The good rule of thumb is to have at least three months. I'm happy to say you have 3.42 months of expenditures in unassigned fund balance. So that is a very, very good place to be. And you know, just as a rule of thumb, we'd like to see that. So you have almost three and a half months' worth of expenditures in your unassigned fund balance. So then if we look on page 20. Page 20, some people would call the income statement. But it is the statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balance for the governmental funds. And again, we'll focus on the general fund. See, the general fund total revenues is 30,605,000. And your total expenditures are 33,230,000. So I encourage you here to turn to page 10 in the M D N A. This is what Ms. Rhonda has prepared, and it has an excellent chart that compares this year to last year. And it also shows the revenues as a percentage of total revenue. So on page 10, you can see occupational tax, for instance, was 17,711,925. That was the occupational tax revenue for '24. You can see that that's about 51% of the total general fund revenue. You can also see that last year, for the '23 year, and it was 17,243,000. So it's an increase of 469,000 over the prior year. So I encourage you to look at this chart. And so everything was pretty consistent, except you can see grant income is 3,356,000 less than prior year. Because grants fluctuate, you get different grants at different years. But so that's the largest decrease. And you can see expenditures on page 11. Expenditures on page 11, again, 24, the amount is mentioned, the percentage. You compare it to '23, and it shows increase or decrease. So overall, your expenditures decreased about 125,000 from prior year. So your revenue, revenue decreased because of the grants. But other revenues, you know, individually, occupational tax went up, insurance premiums tax went up, lease fees and court, base court, you know, those went up. A lot of the revenues by themselves went up, except the grants went down significantly. So that did give you an overall decrease in revenues, almost 2 million. But then your expenditures did go down. Let's go back to, you can go back to page 20. So we saw the detail in the M D N A on pages 10 and 11. But it shows a net change in fund balance for the general fund of 1,385,000. So it's an increase in the general fund fund balance, to give you, again, as I mentioned earlier, a fund balance of 10,274,678. On this page, you see the sportsplex, it's a major fund, and also then there's a column for other governmental funds. That's municipal aid, restaurant tax, opioid, L G N A. But those are on page 88, if you want the detail on that. So then we'll turn to page, let's look at page 20. Sorry, page 22. 22 is the proprietary funds. These are your light, your water and sewer fund, sanitation fund. So this is the balance sheet of those proprietary funds, and it has a column for each, and then a total. So the total assets for the light fund, you can see on the far left column, down about halfway, for those that's looking at that, is 30,741,000. That's an increase over prior year of over a million dollar increase in total assets. And the liabilities, you see total liabilities for the city is 8,830,000. So this is a decrease from prior year, again, primarily because of the pension liability. But overall, you see net position for the light fund is 21,702,000. The net position for the water and sewer is 42,971,603. Net position for the sanitation fund is 567,386. So they all have a positive net position, even though maybe the unrestricted net position is not positive on the sanitation and water and sewer, but overall, they have total net position. Let's just look at page 23. This is the income statement for the proprietary funds. And you can see the total operating revenues for the light is 27,959,814. Last year, it was 26,501,860. So each of the revenues for the year, each operating revenue, went up compared to prior year. Now it's in the, we won't go to that, but it's in the M D N A on page 12. Ms. Simpson has a chart showing last year and this year, so if you wanted to refer to that, but that's on page 12. But the total enterprise funds revenues, 47,135,000. Last year, that was 44,875,000. So it's an increase in the revenues. There's also an increase in the expenditures as well, but not as big as the revenue. But you see the change in net position, down toward the bottom, the change in net position is 1,307,595 for light, 2,601,38 for water and sewer, and 208,000 for sanitation. So each of them had a positive change in that position. Even though the sanitation department's, the increase was less than prior year, it was still a positive increase. I've gone through a bunch of numbers very quickly, and some of you have heard these several times, but are there any questions or anything that I've skipped over too quickly?
Questions for Ms. Teresa? Comments?
So we're in good shape.
Yes, there's a couple more reports. There's disclosures, and there's a couple of reports at the end. But there are no findings, no problems, and you're in good shape.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Teresa. We appreciate the work that you put in. We appreciate the fact that we have an open line of communication. And anytime you've walked in the door, it seems like we've had an opportunity to speak. So thank you so much for that. And we appreciate you and your team, and look forward to working with you next year. At this time, we will need a motion to approve the audit.
No move.
Motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing the motion passes. Next, we'll move into department reports. You will see a business license report in your packet. We will not have a, we won't have Ms. Todd come up for that. Next, we have new business. We have second reading of the ordinance amending chapter 31.45 of the City of Madisonville Code of Ordinances relating to the established committees.
Yes, this ordinance is already in place, and we have removed a couple of these committees. Yes, this ordinance is already in place, and, uh, we have removed a couple of these committees, 'cause they have been combined. So we've taken electric, transportation, sanitation, water, wastewater, and stormwater, and we have combined that to utilities, transportation, and engineering under number ten. And, uh, then we go number five. It talks about the electric committee that has been removed. We have taken out number nine, but we have added utilities, transportation, engineering. This committee shall have general oversight, responsibility, and all matters relating to utilities, including maintenance and repair of all city streets and sidewalks. This committee shall also have general oversight, responsibility, and all matters relating to the collection, transportation, disposition of solid waste materials. And those are the only things that has been changed in that ordinance.
Do we have a motion to approve the amended ordinance?
So move.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any questions? Kim, can we have a roll call?
Yes, sir. Ms. Dee Kavanaugh?
Yes.
Marvin Hightower?
Yes.
Adam Townsend?
Yes.
Larry Knossinger?
Yes.
Frank Stevenson?
Yes.
And Glenda Wade.
All right, motion passes. Next, we have the second reading of an ordinance amending chapter one fifty-eight point zero-three and one fifty-eight point two-two of the chapter one fifty-eight sign regulations of the City of Madison's Court of Ordinances.
In this ordinance, we have added consolidated shopping center sign, a sign constructed for shared use by shopping center tenants, whether tenants are located on common property or in the individual lots within an approved development. And with that, we've turned around and added the, um, the maximum area of the sign face for each side of the consolidated shopping center sign shall not exceed five hundred square feet, and the maximum height shall not exceed sixty-five feet.
Do we have a motion to approve the amended ordinance for chapter one five-eight, zero-three, and one five-eight point two-two of chapter one fifty-eight sign regulations?
So move.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have a motion and a second? Kim, can we have a roll call?
Yes, sir. Ms. Dee Kavanaugh?
Yes.
Marvin Hightower?
See.
Adam Townsend?
Yes.
Larry Knossinger?
Yes.
Frank Stevenson?
Yes.
And Glenda Wade.
Yes.
All right, motion passes. Next, we have a resolution opposing any bills brought forth during the twenty-twenty-five Kentucky General Assembly session by any member of the Kentucky legislature, in full or in part, that provides for the mandated centralized collection of local occupational fees and taxes by the Commonwealth of Kentucky or other third parties. This is a resolution that has been given to us by the Kentucky League of Cities. Uh, as you all are aware, I serve on both the Board of the Kentucky League of Cities and the Executive Board of the, the Kentucky League of Cities. They have asked that cities across the state, uh, that are members of Kentucky League of Cities, support this, um, resolution and put it in a documented, uh, form, so that we can give this to the legislators that are looking at that centralized, uh, collection of taxes.
You might read it too. Whereas under section one eighty-one of the Kentucky Constitution, the Commonwealth of Kentucky cannot impose or require a statewide occupational license fee tax for local purposes. And whereas many cities and counties across the Commonwealth of Kentucky have enacted and imposed local occupational license requirements, and whereas the recipients affiliated with these funds are recorded into the general fund of the local government and allocated towards providing critical services, including police, fire, and emergency management services, public infrastruc- infrastructure improvements, and other critical programs and services to citizens. And whereas the City of Madisonville provides clear, transparent, and efficient payment reporting services to these impacted by occupational license fees, taxes, which is best accomplished at the local level by professionals who have local experience and local knowledge of our communities. And whereas the City of Madisonville strongly believes that mandated state or third-party collection of local occupational license fee, taxes and fees would be detrimental, ineffective, and would have a severely adverse e- effect on the fiscal condition and economic development of the City of Madisonville and all local government entities if mandated by the General Assembly of the Commonwealth of Kentucky. Now therefore be it resolved that the City of Madisonville strongly opposes the adoption of any bills into law in whole or in part by the Kentucky General Assembly that provide for the mandated centralized collection of local occupational license fees, taxes, and urges all members of the General Assembly to vote against proposals of this nature.
All right, do I have a motion to approve the resolution?
So move.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have a motion, a second? Are there any questions?
I just have a comment. And that's that, uh, this, this talk of this centralized statewide collection of occupational, like, local occupational, uh, license fees and taxes, uh, is, flies in the face of the whole principle of home rule in the state of Kentucky, that, uh, cities, uh, and the Commonwealth enjoy. It, uh, interposes a, a third party into a process that has not had any problems, uh, where the citizens, so taxed, uh, uh, those, those funds are collected and processed uh, by, uh, the, the local taxing entity of the city. And it's, uh, there's not been any problem with it. There's been, there's no basis for even pursuing this, this prospect of a centralized statewide collection. It's a, it's a scheme that's, uh, that's concocted, uh, that, uh, there, for which there is no problem to be solved. Uh, as they say, if it isn't broken, it doesn't need fixing, uh, so.
I would just like to make one other comment. Uh, I agree with you completely, Frank. Uh, I believe this is something that the state does not need to do. Um, and I, that's why I'll be calling my representatives and letting them know to oppose any of it. But I do, will not be voting for this, and the reason is, is because I do not want it to be where council gets to a point of where we start saying, we support this state legislation, we support that, don't support this state legislation. I think it's all as individuals. We should do our best to let our representatives know how we feel about that. And so I do agree, and that's why I will be reaching out to mine. I just don't want it to get to a point of where we're doing a resolution to support this or not support that. So that's my only point, but thank you.
And Kentucky League of Cities, uh, effort for this resolution is to show a unified front across, uh, the, the state for the fact that there is no basis for centralized collecting of this tax, which directly affects, uh, the citizens of Madisonville and the city operations. So, uh, which is why the, the Kentucky League of Cities has requested this resolution. Uh, if you notice, we don't get a lot of these requests from the Kentucky League of Cities. Uh, but this is one that they feel like is, um, of an urgent matter that do, that does definitely affect, uh, the operations and collections of what we're doing a perfectly good job with. So, uh, with that being said, uh, well, we have a motion and a second?
I'd like to commend, uh, Councilmember Townsend for contacting directly and personally his representatives. I've, I've done that as well, to express my personal citizen, uh, view of this matter. Uh, and I encourage the other council members to do the same, uh, in addition to however this, uh, resolution goes, goes up or down.
Any other comments or questions? Would you have a motion and a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Hearing one no, motion passes. Next, we have a closed session.
Mayor, I would, uh, move that we, the council move into closed session, uh, in accordance with, uh, K R S sixty-one point eight-one zero subsections, uh, G, just to discuss between a public agency and a representative of a business entity, uh, and the discussions, uh, concerning a specific proposal, if such discussions would jeopardize the siding, retention, expansion, or upgrading of a business. So we'd like to discuss those matters in closed session.
Motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We will be, um, retiring to the back of that.
For after. It wasn't on the agenda. I didn't notice that was on the agenda, tourism.
For the, oh, for the tourism? We, we will come back from closed session, and we will address the tourism, uh, needs. Uh, thank you, Adam, for that. So we will retire to, uh, closed session. Do we have a second? We have a motion, second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing that motion passes, they come out of closed session. Our last order of business is a tourism report that is not listed. But we do have that, Councilmember.
Sorry, I was trying to get.
Townsend.
Good thing. Mayor, at the January 21st joint meeting of the Tourism City Council Committee and The Tourism Advisory Board, there were nine recommendations for funding. So I will start with the first one. There was a, I would like to make a motion to approve $210,000 for Deck the Park for 2025.
A motion for $210,000 for Deck the Park, do we have a second?
Second.
A motion, second, any questions? Frank. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing that motion passes.
But next, I would like to make a motion for $175,000 for the Wings Over Western Kentucky Airshow.
Tell move.
Do we have a motion and a second? Do we have any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing that motion passes.
I would also like to make a motion to approve $30,000 for the Madisonville Illuminated. That's the hot air balloon show at Mar Park, just in case those are understood, questions?
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, a second, any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Next, I would like to make a motion to approve $30,000 for downtown lights and plaza Decor for Christmas.
Second.
A motion and a second, any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing that motion passes.
Next, I would like to make a motion to approve $25,000 for the Beach Bash.
Tell move. Or second.
We have a motion and a second, any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing that motion passes.
Next, I would like to make a motion to approve $25,000 for Harvest Fest.
We have a motion for Harvest Fest for $25,000, do we have a second?
Second.
Frank, we have a motion and a second, any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing that motion passes.
Next, I would like to make a motion to approve $15,000 for the Flight Before Christmas.
We have a motion for $15,000 for Flight Before Christmas, do we have a second?
Second.
Questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing that motion passes.
And next, I'd like to make a motion for $10,000 for the Outdoor Movie.
Motion for the Outdoor Movies for $10,000, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion, second, any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Oppose.
We have one opposed, motion passes.
Uh, next, there was the, that was all for the events, but there was a, a request For $25,000 for event supplies and needs. I'll make that motion, and then I'll give a little context behind that to those others.
We have a motion for event supplies and needs for $25,000, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, a second.
And so, yeah, I just wanted to let those know that don't know about this one as well. This is, what they were doing is having, when they have these events, they're going Out and having to rent other items that they needed for them. This line item here will allow them to purchase these items, so that way we can have them Ourselves anytime we need them for other events, instead of having to go out and have That expenditure during the rentals for those events.
We have a motion, a second, any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing that motion passes. With that being said, I believe that that completes that list.
Yes, and I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion, a second to adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, can stay.